Row call please.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Browning.
Here.
Mr. Rohr.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Mayor Riggle. Here. Tonight's invocation would be led by Pastor David Saliday with Delaware Uterian Universal Fellowship Church. If you will all please rise and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us incline our hearts and minds toward our highest ideals and values and lean in the direction of what is beyond them that inspires and draws us close. As the hymn declares, God's grace is amazing. God's love is dynamic. We don't always live up to that, so we ask for humility and guidance. For now, we may see dimly our knowledge incomplete. We may be blind to things that we will plainly perceive tomorrow. By God's grace, we may see. Like the youth starting school this week and college kids coming in town next, we also aspire to wisdom. Let us remember as we go about our deliberations and decision making that we're all in this together, city council, citizens, and God. God has promised good to us, and on that word, we can secure our hope and then work diligently in faith that we'll all get there together, God willing. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the righteous sands of my nation, America, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Item four on the agenda is the approval of the motion summary of the regular meeting of city council held July 23, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. What is the wish of council?
Move for approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Keller, a second one by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Row call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda, but before we have it read, our attorney would like to give his two cents.
Yes, just one cent.
Okay, just one cent.
Madam Mayor, members of council, if you look at item I on there, that establishes September 10th as the date and time for the public hearing for the NCA that we've had prior presentations from the developer about. I wanted to bring it to your attention because we had a packed agenda on the meeting beforehand, so we didn't want to put another public hearing on there, so we put it for September 10th. However, when I was making the agenda, I put it as a second reading, meaning that we just wouldn't have it on the agenda next time. With that said, if you would like to have it up for a second reading next meeting and then a public hearing on the third reading, I wanted to give you the opportunity to make an amendment to the consent agenda. Otherwise, the way it would work is it would just basically be tabled for a week and then come back for its reading and hearing, because we usually have public hearings on the second reading, so that's why I did it, but it doesn't have to be that way.
How do we know we have a packed agenda the next meeting?
The August 24th.
Oh, that one, okay.
The earlier meeting has got two pretty big public hearings, I think. Is that correct?
Well, there's, I think.
Metro Place or number.
High Point and Morgan Reza.
So it's totally up to council. You could even have the hearing that day if you want. Everyone's out of town, I didn't want to overload the agenda, but I wanted to draw to your attention, so if you wanted to make an amendment, you could.
What do you want me to look for?
And just for council's information, that's really the, that's not the final step in the whole, in the authority process. There's another ordinance that would have to start a reading process where you actually authorize it if you end up doing that, so.
It has to, the hearing, one way or the other, has to occur within, I believe, 40 days, so it's either meeting we pick will be within that.
Why don't we just make September 10th the third reading?
Third reading. Let's just amend this to the third, and if you will.
That'll work.
Read it into the record that way on item I. Anything else?
No, I'd say, Your Honor.
Okay, deep breath, Lane, and start reading.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary, the Finance Committee meeting held on July 11, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary, the Historic Preservation Commission meeting held on June 27, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item C, acceptance of the motion summary, the Records Commission meeting held on December 13, 2017, as recorded and transcribed. Item D, acceptance of the motion summary, the Airport Commission meeting held on April 19, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item E, acceptance of the motion summary, the Planning Commission meeting held on July 18, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. Item F, established August 27, 2018, at 7:20 PM, as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number 18-69. An ordinance approving a rezoning amendment request by Joshua Morgan Construction LLC at 1354 State Route 521 from A1 to R3 on approximately 2.091 acres. Item G, established August 27, 2018, at 7:30 PM, as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number 18-70. An ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a rezoning amendment for Seattle House Apartments 240 units on approximately 24.212 acres from R6 and B3 Community Business to R6 and B3 PMU and located on the north side of US 3637 and the south side of Bowtown Road, just east of Chasron Auto Storage Lot. And ordinance number 18-71, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a conditional use permit, allowing the placement of a PMU to be established for the Seattle House Apartments 240 units on approximately 24.212 acres and located on the north side of US 3637 and the south side of Bowtown Road, just east of the Chasron Auto Storage Lot. Item H, established August 27, 2018, at 7:45 PM, as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number 18-73. An ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a rezoning amendment for the High Point Place Apartments 160 units on approximately 16.70 acres from R6 to R6 PMU with a planned mixed-use overlay, excuse me, multifamily residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on the north side of Bowtown Road, just west of Village Gate Apartments. And ordinance number 18-74, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a conditional use permit, allowing the placement of a PMU to be established for the High Point Place Apartments 160 units on approximately 16.70 acres and located on the north side of Bowtown Road, just west of Village Gate Apartments. Item I, established September 10, 2018, at 7:20 PM, as a date and time for a public hearing and third reading for ordinance number 18-77. An ordinance determining that the petition for the establishment of the Terra Alta Community Authority complies as to form and substance with the requirements of Section 349.03 of the Ohio Revised Code and to fix a date and place for a public hearing on that petition and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if these times are too close together. 7:30 on one and 7:45, there's no way we're going to get through those. There's no way. I think we need to do, at least do eight o'clock on the second one. That's still only giving us a half hour. There's no way we're going to get through 15 minutes. Amendment right now?
Yeah, I mean, I would, you're inclined to change it. I would change it now and maybe make it the same time. 7:20 is, excuse me, the.
Well, that'll be the next week.
Well, the one good thing, Your Honor, is I think these are the same developer, so they're kind of close together, so people might kind of be here for both anyways, so it's okay if we start later, if people aren't waiting for no reason. Aren't the G and H the same, Dave, Metro Development?
They're the same developer, but at Planet Commission, we had different groups of people because they're not in the same spot. Probably half an hour between the two.
I mean, the second was more comfortable than the first.
My suggestion, you may run into.
I guess we'll just leave it now. Hope they'll understand.
I know when I've talked to people, I've explained that it won't start before that time, but it may sometimes not start exactly at that time.
All righty. What is the wish of council on the consent agenda?
Move for approval of the consent agenda, as a matter of fact.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second one by Ms. Keller. Any further discussion? Row call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries. Item six on the agenda is a presentation for Access Delaware by Marie Keister. She's the president of Mercury Upset, so, welcome.
Thank you. We have a presentation coming up.
And if you will state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Marie Keister, 7759 Crowley Drive, Dublin, Ohio 43017.
Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, just a couple of, I guess, introductory comments, that this engagement with Marie Keister and her firm really grew out of a retreat that council had earlier in the year about how to engage the community in a conversation about our transportation challenges. And she has been busy at work over the last six months trying to assess issues that may have come up during that little effort. Also, in addition to that, what are some of the recommendations she might have for this community as we try to tackle this issue of transportation, broadly speaking? So I know that that was something that we really wanted to get started on, so that we could have this conversation. And so we kind of branded this Access Delaware, and this is really one of the first opportunities for council to hear about some of the findings of Marie Keister's and her work, so.
Well, thank you, Tom. You just covered my first slide for me, so that was a perfect setup. And I want to say, preface my remarks, by any time you ask citizenry to identify challenges and how to make things better, you're asking them to be critics, right? But I want to say it was such a pleasure meeting all the different people who came out and participated, because they really do love this city and they want to be a part of making it even better. So we heard a lot of nice things about that. My focus is going to be more on what they told you to improve, so I just wanted to set that stage for you a little bit. So, as Tom mentioned, we wanted to seek input from the community, a wide variety of community leaders, officials, and residents on what they're facing in the way of transportation challenges. And you had a levy that failed pretty dramatically in 2016, so we wanted to tease out and give people an opportunity to talk about why they thought it failed. We want to hear what's important to the public as you move forward and really reinforce that building trust and transparency with the public, which I know you're already committed to, but we wanted to get their further ideas on that, and provide future direction, taking that community input into account, so we have some recommendations at the end. And then meet transportation needs in ways that are cost-effective and smart. That is more of a goal overall for Access Delaware, but we did talk about that quite a bit in our questions that we asked of these people who participated. So first of all, what did we do and who did we talk to? We talked to residents, leaders, and officials that aged in range from 25 to 74. Those people who are willing to come out and give time of their day tended to skew a little bit older. The average years in Delaware were about 15, but we had some newcomers, we had people who'd been around quite a while. We really worked hard to get representation from all four quadrants of the city, and I believe we succeeded in that. And about half work and live in Delaware, so it was either or, basically, that was covered. So we had a lot of people with firsthand experience here. And I want to note, those who didn't necessarily live here were people who have their career here or they deal with constituencies here. So you'll hear a little bit more about that in a minute. This effort was between March and May, and we engaged people three ways. We conducted about 16 key influencer interviews. You gave us suggestions on who to talk to, and they were very forthcoming, that was fun. We had community forums, but I want to frame them more as focus groups that were open to the public. They were very small and targeted by definition, and we really got great engaged feedback. These were informed people that really wanted to share their thoughts. And then we had an online survey that had over 1,000 responses. Now, I want to qualify this, this is not like a public opinion poll that's been statistically sampled and so forth. So that's why we say this is qualitative conversations and not quantitative, so please keep that in mind as we move forward. So our key takeaways. So, no surprise, most people drive to get around, although quite a few talked about loving to walk downtown and bicycling and were appreciative of the good sidewalks and the investments you've made to make that possible. There was a lot of agreement that Delaware roads need work. There was, "I've got a lot of potholes in my area," or "I just see a lot of deterioration, why can't we keep up on that quicker?" Driving in Delaware can be a challenge. They pointed out the hot spots, the congested areas. We had some people that aren't affected by that at all, but of course, the majority really do feel those pinch points. And I'm sure it would be no surprise that we heard the point and we heard Central Avenue and East William and lots of words about bypasses and double outer belts and lots of great ideas. So, why did the 2016 levy fail? At least half of those who showed up in our either survey or face-to-face had voted for it and were disappointed that it didn't pass, but they had a lot of good input on why they thought others may not have voted for it. A lot of people didn't want to pay more for taxes, didn't want a greater permanent tax, that's no shock, didn't feel it was needed for roads, which is really telling to us that they didn't really feel that the case was made strongly enough, that there's a problem that needs fixed. There are those people who, of course, live here and work in another community and have to pay those taxes, and so that was a big issue. Well, you know, if I'm in Columbus, I pay 2.5 and I also have to pay here, that's a lot of a tax burden, I want to be mindful of that, and maybe that's why people didn't vote for it. Generally, how are the funds being spent? Lot of lack of clarity, they thought the levy was vague or the education effort was confusing, not well explained. You're always going to get some of that criticism, very rarely is anybody going to say, "Wow, you did a brilliant job communicating, you don't do any more of that." Everybody always wants a better job. But I do think that there was some concern there, that maybe it could have been explained a little bit better, that you'd want to probe. Other priorities, maintaining, take care of what you have, what we have, and improving roadways. So there are those specific congestion areas that they're concerned about, they want to make sure that their streets are safe, not only for the driver, but for the pedestrian and the bicyclist. Public asked for increased communication, as I said, you're never done in your communication efforts, that's something you have to work on all the time, but they want to give input on your transportation priorities. Some people acknowledge that you do, but they, again, want to be more engaged. They specifically said they liked the ideas of more surveys, public meetings, public education, and we gave them a list of ideas and also gave them an opportunity to fill in the blank if they had another idea. And I want to acknowledge they use your social media page, website, and your newsletter, and they use it and appreciate it, so that was nice to hear. So, those were common themes that we heard from those 1,000-plus or 1,100-plus conversations, but as we take that away, as you're going out, I think you have to make a stronger case for transportation investments. I think you have to really tell the story about why it's not quite as simple to fix a road as people might think and why funding gaps may exist. Funding is complicated, and it takes a while to explain it, but I think if you take that extra effort to help people understand how those things work and help them understand the problem inside and out, I think that will go a long way in giving credibility to any future levy efforts. You know, in short, the public won't fix a problem they don't believe exists, so you really, they have to come to see that. Communicating best practices in transportation and engineering, everybody's a roadway engineer, everybody knows how to fix problems in their neighborhood, right? Well, an intuitive reaction to any congestion problem is, let's just build an airbelt, let's just build a bypass. Well, you have engineering experts in the room who can tell you why that is not always the wisest choice, but we have to explain that to people. We have to bring them along and explain that sometimes if you just build more lanes, you create more traffic. Or a bypass, actually what you're doing is, it's the people within your community that are creating the bulk of the trips, it's not always those outsiders. So that's part of the education piece you always have to go through when you're dealing with these transportation projects. There's always trade-offs involved, and helping people understand what those trade-offs are is important. How the city prioritizes needs, you know, this is another black box that the public doesn't really understand. You try to be very methodical about it, you have a rationale, but does a city resident really understand how that works? And why funding, it always seems like we never have enough, right? Well, you and I know how the state has cut back on funding for transportation, but the average resident doesn't understand that, and so helping them to understand that you may have had more money to spend on transportation just a few years ago than you do today, and then, of course, with inflation and so forth, your money's not going as far. The other thing is, people will see that you are investing in transportation. Well, you say you have a problem, but you're still finding money. Well, you have to explain to people, "Well, grants are a wonderful vehicle for funding things, but they're not sustainable, and we had the advantage of being able to take advantage of those grants, but that's not something that you can count on day in and day out." Building trust and understanding. We all know that public discourse these days and trust in government is at an all-time low, although if you go back 100 years, people were screaming at each other back then, too. So I take some solace in that, but it may not be the worst ever. But you constantly have to prove yourself, you constantly have to be transparent and inclusive and educate like crazy. You are never done with that. So as you consider talking about transportation funding in the public realm and trying to make a case if you need funding, you're going to have to constantly be letting people come in and look over your shoulders and be willing to answer any question, no matter how tough. You already have been conservative, good stewards of funds, and we heard people that acknowledged that, but you're going to have to prove it to anybody else who you may be asking for support in the future. I already mentioned, you already have some things that people really appreciate. We had some people in the meeting say, "Oh yeah, every time I call the city, I get lots of great support, I find them very responsive." Mind you, we had a few people in the room that grumbled and were convinced you're in a back room, you know, creating some master plan that I wish we were all smart enough to do, and, but for the most part, everybody understood that you have a tough job and you do try to weigh all sorts of points of view. So, for building trust and understanding, I think this is where we might have a conversation this evening. Of course, you've got to communicate, you know, whether it's letters to say, "Here's what we're doing in your neighborhood," which I know you've been doing on some of your major transportation projects as they move in to more direct impact to residents. Emails, you already have some mechanisms to communicating with people, you're probably never going to get an email for every resident, and that's okay, but that's why you have to use multiple ways to communicate with people. Quarterly public forums. Right now, you already do project-specific public meetings. The audiences that we spoke with, the residents, they seemed interested in having even more opportunities to provide input. So with projects, you tend to have public meetings around project milestones, but we propose public forums as maybe an opportunity just to educate people generally about how you're doing your work. Of course, online surveys, social media, those are also tools to continue to communicate to people. And you have now the Access Delaware website as a repository for putting updates on different transportation projects, but you'll have to make sure you keep that fresh. And I know you have a team that will, or a team, Lee is a big team that keeps that website up to speed. But here is something I think you should consider, and full disclosure, I have been working with City of Powell, and they have been going through some similar experiences you have with their transportation funding challenges. And they followed a model by Upper Arlington, and they convened a task force of 18 residents. And city council members appointed each member of those task force members, and what that task force has been able to do, and it's why I'm thinking, recommending that you should consider it here, is those, in their case, it was citizens, it can be a mix of community leaders and so forth. In their case, they have a good mix of business owners, they have engineering professionals, they have finance professionals, they have a couple people on the task force that were very vocal and high-profile in supporting their failed levy from 2010. And what they did was, they started convening in January, the task force had until about May, so, you know, five or six months, and I think that's a reasonable time. They worked very closely with their finance director of Powell, and that task force was allowed to ask any question they wanted. They understood they were being convened to understand what the funding gaps were for Powell for transportation and infrastructure. What are the funding mechanisms, what could be potential solutions, and what are the needs? And, you know, so what are the needs, what are the funding gaps, and what are the potential solutions? They, this was all volunteer on their part, they met evenings once a month as a whole group, and then they had subcommittees along those three topics. And then they came back in June and they presented their findings to city council. Then city council, and by the way, their findings were that they recommended an increase in the income tax. They only asked for what they need to fill their gap. And there was some controversy, "Well, why don't you ask for more so you can get ahead of it and deal with future congestion and so forth?" They said, "Nope." You know, based on where their heads were at, we only want to ask citizens for what they need. I'm not saying that would be the answer here, but what I am recommending is, those people really got their hands into all of that detail, they became pavement experts. It was pretty funny to hear them talk about pavement rating conditions and how they never anticipated they would understand that, but together, they unanimously passed a recommendation. And last week, city council then also voted to put the levy on the ballot. They addressed things like that credit, you know, how I said earlier, there's concern about, "Well, I work in Columbus and I live in Delaware." They had the same thing, so they found a way to address that. So it's just a very interesting way to help your citizenry feel very engaged, feel very informed, and now that city council has taken that action, they have 18 citizens who are willing to say, "This is what I learned, these people are doing a good job, we asked the hard questions and they gave us real answers." So I just think it's a model you might want to consider here as you move forward. So the other thing I want to cover is, these findings that you have in your packet are also being reported to the public. First, there was just a newsletter article, just a brief recap, because we wanted to share the more detailed findings with you. It will be available on the website, on the webpage, and there will be a stuffer, an eight-and-a-half by 11, two-sided piece that will go in the utility bill in September that will summarize these same findings, so we can report to the public what we heard. And then Bill and his team, who are going out and doing public meetings for project-specific issues, they will be incorporating these same themes as they go forth. So with that, I would like to take any questions or comments.
Any questions? It's really well done, thank you very much for explaining this, I know you've been busy the last six months.
Six months.
Six months already. Questions by council members?
Questions by council members?
Would it make sense to probably perhaps have a follow-up discussion with council, maybe as part of a work session? There's a lot in what we just presented, and you need some time to probably think about what some of these recommendations are and what they mean.
Absolutely.
That's the interest. We'd prefer to get that set up.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Elaine, if you will read item seven into the record. Ordinance number 18-64, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit request by NNG-Taccar Oil LLC for renovation and expansion of the Marathon Gas Station at 473 South Sandusky Street on approximately 0.80 acres on property zone B3, Community Business District. Mr. Eflin?
Madam Mayor, members of council, this case is for a conditional use permit for what we all refer to as the Old Swifty Gas Station on South Sandusky Street. One note, there was a development plan exemption that came forward as well to your planning commission. Planning Commission did approve that development plan exemption. As you know, exemption stop at planning commission. And so I won't be, when we talk about, but I won't really be covering the development plan exemption here tonight. The question before you is really the conditional use permit. And that's only because we could not find a conditional use permit on file for the Swifty Gas Station or a gas station at that location, even though one has been there since at least 1990. And so in a way, the conditional use permit is a little perfunctory to the new plan. The new plan is for a 3,800 square foot gas station to replace the aging and really kind of falling apart gas station that's there now. It would be a branded Marathon Station at 473 South Sandusky Street. Property is zone B3, Business District. Here's an aerial photograph should we need it. The extent of the hardscape will remain exactly as it is today. The canopy size gets a little bit bigger in height, but it covers the gas pumps going from two pumps to four pumps. And of course, the building gets a little bit bigger. It's almost just a 500 square foot building at this point in time. Also, a little bit of stormwater management will be added to the backside of the property. We see the green here in the photo, in the aerial photograph. So this is just a colored up site plan for you. But again, before you tonight is just the conditional use permit, which your planning commission unanimously recommends as to be a staff to just formally put that in place. There's actually a Board of Zoning Appeals variance in place for a gas station use and the canopy on this site, but for whatever reason, it's not a conditional use permit. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Dave, the owner of this property is the same individual that bought the Swifty on 23, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Yeah. They're doing, they're doing a wonderful refurb on that facility. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is the applicant here that would like to come forward if there, anything needs to be added to Dave's presentation?
Oh, man.
Okay, all right. And we will open this up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward on this? If you'll come.
No, this issue, but on a different.
On this particular issue, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? You'll come forward to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Constance Grossman, Two Field Crest Drive in Delaware. I'm used to design and oversee PASMAT facilities. My questions are, do you have any LUST surveys? Do you have any problem leaking underground storage tank? Any problems with any soil borings already there? And if yes, what is being done, like soil vapor extraction, or what treatment types are you using? Because otherwise, your stormwater is going to be contaminated. You're in a sensitive water. That's my concern.
Okay. And I think Chief is going to answer those, so have a seat. Sit back down, Constance.
Yes.
Sit back down, Constance. He's going to answer.
Good evening. Pertaining to the underground storage tanks, those are handled actually by the State Fire Marshal's Office, Bureau of Underground Storage Tanks. They have the authority and complete regulation concerning that. My understanding, those tanks are going to remain there and will be relicensed through the State Fire Marshal's Office. So any type of soil contamination, which we are not aware of any soil contamination at this point in time, will be handled through them.
Does the applicant understand all this and agree with everything that was said? Okay. All right.
May I?
You may.
In my experience, one of the prime concerns of any lending agent is prior contamination and the problem with the next occupant now inheriting that contamination in addition to anything that may happen, you know, somebody leaps the hose on, whatever. So do we know if any tertiary survey was done by lending agents, or is that not responsibility in the city?
That is not our responsibility as far as initiation of those. That's between the lending agency and the individual property owners themselves. Those do come through me. We report those also. Not only do we do our due diligence on that piece of property, but we also forward that to our local emergency planning council that also oversees the regulation of hazardous materials. And to my knowledge, I don't recall seeing a request for this piece of property.
Last question, have there been any stormwater runoff samples done from the outfall from this location?
No, we don't routinely do sampling of stormwater runoff. Again, like Chief said, unless there's some cause initiated by an overseeing agency, Ohio Public Natural Resources, Ohio Forensic Protection Agency would, is where that would start. And then we'd be involved in seeing copies of reports. And to my knowledge, there's, there's been no study of contaminants in outfalls from this property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just also to add one, in order for those tanks to become back operational, they'll be required to go through testing through the Bureau of Underground.
Yes. Category, yeah. Anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, see none. We'll take it back to, we'll close the public hearing and take it back to city council.
I'll move to spin the rules of quiet review readings. I want to take 264.
Second.
Question by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Move for move on, more than 16, 264.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item eight, which is letters, petitions, and public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time? You'll come forward to the microphone, please. And then if you'll state your name and address for the record.
I'm Susan McGrail, and I live at 268 Sullivan Drive, Delaware, Ohio. I have brought a copy for everyone of ordinance 2018-13. This is an ordinance to regulate massage establishments. And this was the Westerville ordinance that they wrote based on allegations of the massage parlor that was in their city, not actual investigation, but allegations. I grew up there. My mother still lives there, and I'm, I'm involved in that city quite a bit. I would like that Delaware mirror the city of Westerville in their efforts, and that it would be reasonable for the city of Delaware to enact an ordinance requiring that massage facilities be licensed and be accountable to a state board. I say this as a parent, as a social worker, as a licensed forensic interviewer for the state of Ohio under General Dewine. I also am a volunteer for the safe house here that we deal with human trafficking with these women, and also men or boys. I want to move to the fact that in any situation where you're doing something medical, that if you have licensure, that you are monitored, and that I would suggest that none of us would go to a dentist who didn't have a license for dentistry, or a doctor, or chiropractor, nurse. I'd also like to address that this would require that the people who are in these facilities be able to provide a full legal name and a current residential address, not just the address of the business where they are working. That it would request a services that would be offered at the establishment, and the full name of any person who would provide a massage treatment at the massage establishment. There would also be sufficient information to identify the licensure for each therapist. It can't be done under someone who is licensed, and that they have a group of people who are doing it. They would all require to have one. Finally, what I found most disturbing was that they not allow employees or therapists to appear in any state of undress or to wear transparent clothing or clothing that otherwise reveals a specific anatomical area. I know that I went in and one of my neighbors went in. We were curious what type of massage would be offered. I currently go to massage therapists on Sawmill Road. My other friend suffers from severe scoliosis and is on oxygen, and on two separate occasions, we both went in unbeknownst to each other. We both found the girls, and I mean girls, to be in inappropriate clothing. I also found that the one girl that spoke with me at that establishment spoke English. The other one did not. With my neighbor, the other one spoke English, but the other one did not. And they also said to me that they did not have their papers to work, their passports were being held by Wendy. That was concerning to me, particularly as a licensed reporter to the state of Ohio, so I did so. I also found them advertising on Craigslist Backdoor with a picture of a very young minor, and it was sexually oriented, with sexual content. And that also went to the state of Ohio as well. My concern is, is that this offers us more ability for trafficking within our city if we don't adopt an ordinance such as this. And Westerville has done an excellent job in this eight-page memorandum and ordinance that there aren't any loopholes. It's just incredibly well-written. And I've submitted it to the mayor a while ago in a letter or in an email. I also attached the article that Westerville had about allegations and not investigation. And I don't know if there are any questions from you, since I brought the ordinance to you and that I have sent emails regarding it.
I myself had talked to our attorney about it, and we just said we were going to see what Westerville was doing with it. So him and I did have a conversation about this with the city manager.
And I can add to that. And Councilman Jones, I believe, communicated with, with you back in less than a month ago regarding the process that we would be following.
Correct.
That's what we're doing now. I have been in touch with Dave Colomworth, the city manager in Westerville. He's provided me the staff report and the background information. The chief of police has spoken with the individuals on their staff who were instrumental in getting that ordinance before city council. So that's what we're doing now, is putting together a staff report, as Councilman Jones indicated would be the process. We would provide a report to council. Here's the process. These are the issues you need to consider when doing this. Essentially, we're going to, the consideration is to regulate something, and it's not being, it's partially regulated now, but obviously having the city play a more active role in it. So that's what we're in the process of, of considering. I don't know if Attorney Schulman can add anything to that, but.
I can, but I don't want to interrupt you.
That's good.
We're. I, I sent the Westerville draft to Chris Ballard, who is one of the attorneys in our office who helps on a lot of legislative matters. I asked him to review the ordinance and come up with a draft that, as much as I love Westerville, they're probably pretty good. I don't just take things by blind faith, so I asked him to review it and come up with a draft that might be something that we could propose to council. Council policy-wise, I wanted to do that, and so he's been working on that, but I'm waiting for him to get me a draft back. There were some things in the Westerville ordinance I had some concerns about. There's one part that I think might not be particularly constitutional, but we can get into that later. So basically, I want him to adapt. Westerville presented the draft, and then council can look at the staff report for the policy decisions, but at least we'll have a draft that we think is as good as it could be.
Currently, how is it being regulated? If it isn't regulated by the Health Board, Cosmetology Board, Medical Board, Health Department, it's not regulated by any governing board?
Well, in Westerville, if you follow that case, what they pursued was a zoning violation. So there was a business use. So what Westerville's ordinance does is, is require that you be certified in massage through the State Board of Medicine. Currently, you, you can practice massage in the state of Ohio with the certification. You also, there's people who get a college degree or get a, or get like a certification elsewhere to learn massage that, that perform massage. So there's multiple ways you can perform massage legally as a business. It's, it's how you do it, or what other services you're offering that makes it illegal. And that's where legitimate businesses that are certified by the state are probably less likely to engage in those behaviors. And that's, I believe, the angle that Westerville went after.
So again, my question is, is how is the parlor on 2211 being regulated? How do we know checks and balances after what I personally physically saw, which was?
I can assure you that the Delaware Police Department has spent hours and hours working on that. And I can give you details, but I can't support your allegation. We, we've taken that seriously, and we've looked, and we've done things that I can't speak about publicly, but I don't have anything.
I appreciate your work. That was the other thing, is, is that we have precious resources. I'm sure that Chief has a lot of other things he needs to be doing. We've got an outbreak with Marion and trafficking drugs. We have got a lot going on. So an ordinance such as this would really help him in his job, our police officers, not waste precipitous resources that could be used for something that we could just lock down, just not have to deal with. I, I'm sure he's been very thorough in his investigation. I'm sure it's probably taken a lot of time. My son is a police officer in Colorado and is on the sexual team. He's a forensic interviewer as well. We've had lots of discussions about this. So with that said, I just wanted to provide you with the copy, and I, I would think that you are speaking with Westerville, so if there's something quote unconstitutional in it, we could amend it. And then perhaps, how would we revisit this and discuss it again? And then I know that Dr. McGrail would like to have a few comments, too.
Yeah, I guess I should just clarify so we're not left with this cloud. I'm not saying Westerville's ordinance overall is unconstitutional. There was a line in there about prohibiting advertising material using sexual or provocative words or images, and I think that might violate somebody's First Amendment rights to communicate. It's kind of a broad, unenforceable. It's kind of a broad, unenforceable standard. So that's probably the only part I've honed in on as something that we might want to amend out. People, GoDaddy.com, use provocative advertising, but you can't say no unless it's obscene. So I think that's the part I had concerns about. But everything else, I don't have constitutional concerns with.
Darren, real quick, as I've read this multiple times, unless I'm missing something, this, if we adopted this exact ordinance, this is only for a brick and mortar establishment, right? This wouldn't prevent anybody from working out of their house, you know, mobile, I guess is the word for it.
I think there's sections in there that deal with the business and then deal with the person. But I've looked at a couple different, so I might be confusing them. I've been looking at different ordinances from around the state.
May I interject?
Sure.
Okay, there are mobile massage therapists where they bring their table to your home and they are licensed and they have to show your, their license and they have to report to one of the medical boards, cosmetology, et cetera. So you do have the option of having a legitimate massage at home. Some of these establishments, such as this one advertised, they don't use tables, they use beds. So there are, and then in terms of sexually oriented content, I think since Craigslist, the backdoor page in which this place was advertising, they shut it down. So if there is allowed to be free speech and you can have that, then I don't know how they got around shutting down Craigslist backdoor because that would have been free speech to advertise.
That was actually, the FBI took possession of that, that page for...
But it wasn't considered a violation of free speech then to...
Well, I think what that page was doing was advertising money for sexual services, which is illegal.
Correct.
Which is having a scantily clad provocative, but not naked thing would not be the same.
Such as 2211 was advertising there on Craigslist backdoor.
Oh, I'm not familiar with what that is.
But they were. So thank you for your time. I would just want to submit the ordinance. I appreciate you having a discussion about it. I also just wanted to add that Troy Township, when we had the discussion with Troy Township two years ago, they assured me that they already had an ordinance in place for Troy Township that of an establishment or business of sexually oriented content. And there were a couple other words, because I was still wrapping my head around this on how it would affect us, that they said that they had it on lockdown with their, an ordinance within Troy Township. So they have something as well, but I don't, I didn't get my hands on that.
We can reach out to them.
Okay.
I'm Dr. John Magrill, practicing physician in Delaware. And I'll be very brief, but this is just a concern about the health and welfare of the Delaware residents. And that is that all the providers who provide health services have a lot of education. There's a lot of money spent to get the education. We have, we have massage therapists of several levels regulated by the medical board and for some reason there is a loophole which is putting it in the hands of city councils to regulate unlicensed massage and that shouldn't be the way. You don't have to regulate me. I can't put up a license without providing medical services without being put in jail. And it just doesn't make sense. But unfortunately, this is put into your hands. And so other cities and communities have had to approach the same thing. And so you need to know that the number one cause of infection in the United States is transmitted by your hands. And so the federal government requires hospitals to be 100% compliant with washing your hands or cleansing them with alcohol before you touch a patient and after you touch a patient. If you don't, if you don't, if you don't meet that standard, it's really like 95%, which is acceptable, but that's pretty high. If you don't meet that standard, they will reduce your payments, Medicare will reduce your payments, and then the commercial insurers go along with Medicare and they'll reduce your payments. So you have to meet a standard. There is no standard here and unfortunately, this is put in your lap. And so that's, that's my concern. You can't, you can't go to a health provider and not have a health service governed in some way. Spraying down the tables, clean linens, licensure, you want to be guaranteed that your citizens are getting a service. And people are going to this facility to get a legitimate massage and they're not licensed and not providing a healthy service. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, just out of curiosity, Doctor. How do they, how do they monitor how you wash your hands? Just general question of interest.
Well, there's a little dispenser, just like the little dispensers that just spray in your hands. So in a hospital, like in and outside of the doors or in an emergency room, there's little dispensers, then you just pop it.
But I mean, how do they know if you're meeting that 95% rate of...
Yeah, there's a monitor, trust me.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
So when you see the lady with the clipboard or the man with the clipboard, you got, yeah.
And patients, if they come into my room and they haven't washed their hands and if they have a tie on, the tie goes because it hasn't been dry cleaned in a long time and they wash their hands. And I have never had mercy. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward on something that's not on tonight's agenda? I think the gentleman in the back first, then I'll get to you. You'll come forward, please? If you will state your name and address for the record.
Brett Latta, 376 North Sandusky Street. Be very brief. Madam Mayor, members of council, it's good to see you. My comment may seem small change in light of the previous discussion. I live on North Sandusky, right across from Zeus Tire. And this, my comment is not to complain about Zeus Tire, but with school kicking off this week, I work on my front porch a lot and I think we have a lot of folks speeding on North Sandusky. So all that to say, I know resources are thin, but I think it would be good to just put a word out to the police department. I think, Madam Mayor, you know what I'm talking about. You're making the turn on Hefner. Mr. Zeus is quite busy for being a small outfit and some of his customers will block the sidewalks. Our kids are coming home from school. Many of them are in their own earbud world, have no idea what's going on around them. And I just think we could get just a little bump in enforcement, especially around school rush hour would be, would help meet one of those takeaways from our access Delaware transportation. Thank you.
Well, Chief Pujanowski just made notation. If we could have somebody look at Mr. Zeus and make sure that that front area is cleaned up. I know we speak to him quite often, I believe.
And again, I don't want to complain about Mr. Zeus. I mean, I think...
Trust me, I have enough.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you like to come forward?
Good evening. Travis Urban, Disease Prevention Program Manager at the Delaware General Health District, 1 West Winter Street. Just ask to share the word that we will be mosquito fogging tonight in Delaware, starting at dusk. We had a mosquito pool, we tested, came back positive West Nile virus. So we announced it last Thursday and we will be out fogging tonight on the west side of Delaware. So just making sure, make sure you guys are all aware.
Thank you. I did see some signs up this weekend. You're putting them in the right of ways, so you need to find a different place to put them or our code enforcement will be picking them up. Sorry.
I will share the word.
I know they're public comment, but what's right is right and what's wrong is wrong.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none.
Ms. Keller?
I have none.
Mr. Brownie?
Thank you.
Mr. Brewer?
Thank you.
Mr. Hollinger?
Finance men on the 11th and item 25 in our agenda here speaks to some of that.
Okay.
We'll see you then. Thanks.
Okay. Elaine, do you have anything to report from Main Street? I also believe you will.
Oh, well, I appreciate it. I actually hadn't prepared anything. We are, we did have a concern that at our last meeting, which I've brought forward into Chief Pujanowski and Mr. Farino, just over regards to people making turns when they shouldn't be, pedestrians having closenesses during some of the Main Street events. So it's something that they're aware of and we're going to maybe talk with Bibler at Main Street about how we can maybe change their layout to not so much condensed in one area.
Yeah, Elaine provided me that info and I have had a tentative conversation with Suzy Bibler about that. So we're going to sit down at some point here next week or two and try and look at some changes we can make for next year's season. This year's season has just about peaked and it's going to be over soon, so we'll try and implement something for next year.
Are we using any of our Citizens Academy on these evenings rather than, you know, hiring more police?
I think, I think part of it is how they're, how they're setting up and make sure they're setting up and can we create more space with what, what they're using right now. I think we start that way. We had a couple ideas we kicked around.
Okay. All righty. Thank you. We'll move on to item 11, 12, and 13. Please read this. Oh, I'm sorry, let's do 10 first. I circled it out. I apologize. So read item 10, please.
Consideration of a liquor permit trex for Mystic Golf and Gains LLC at 1159 Columbus Pike, Delaware, Ohio, 43015, permit class D2.
So we just need some, yeah.
Chief, who's gone? Who's gone?
So this is a, we took action at a previous council meeting, but I, my understanding is this is a trex application, requires some additional action?
The trex process starts with an economic development trex memo and application that then will be submitted by us and the applicant to Division of Liquor Control. Division of Liquor Control then follows up with their process, sends us back the objection or waiver of hearing form, which is normally the form you get on other liquor permit processes, which we will still get. However, we typically combine those processes in one. So by your vote tonight, you would be allowing the city manager to sign off on both forms, that permission to trex, the economic development portion, and then the waiver of the hearing. And that's why we have our police department actually just go ahead and do an investigation or a background check, excuse me, on those at this point, so we can just take care of everything at once.
Sean's correct there. We actually presented this at the July 23 meeting for their D3 license and they're trying to trex in the D1. So nothing's changed with their background investigation in two weeks. So we would, again, rely on that same investigation to say we have nothing to substantiate a request for a hearing.
Maybe for the benefit of the public, you could explain what trex means, what's happening with this. So basically, what a trex is, a community is limited to the number of liquor permits in each classification. There's a gazillion classifications, if you look at Division of Liquor Control's website. That's based on population. So when a community runs out of a particular type of license, a business can actually go and purchase a license in another community and then trex it or transport it into the community in which they're locating their business by going through this process. So basically, it's a much more expensive way of going about getting a liquor license because they have to have usually a liquor attorney in the process. They have to purchase the license, which usually they don't get for the same price as they're going to buy one from the Division of Liquor Control. And, and then they have to seek not only one, but two points of permission from us to do so. It's not really permission, I guess, but waiver of objections, really.
You tell me if there's attorneys who specialize in liquor?
There are liquor attorneys, yes. Unfortunately, it's liquor law, not drinking. I know. Darren wanted to be one of those.
So the action tonight of council is to...
So this would be both. So you would be establishing the ability for us to submit the trex form back to the state, saying this is an economic development project. It's good for our community. And the second portion, which is the waiver of hearing, that's really reflective of the background check, saying that the individuals, the business and/or the location has no issues that would prevent that from being a safe place to have a liquor permit.
Essentially, you'd be authorizing the city manager to submit that when it comes in. We won't get it until they actually get the application for the permit in their name, but we're recommending you just over-stamp that right now based on the current investigation.
It speeds things up for the applicant and is one less piece of legislation the council will have on the agenda because the information won't change based on the background check.
What is wish of council?
I will recommend that we authorize both steps of the liquor permit trex to Mystic Golf and Gains.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second, and Ms. Keller. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller? Yes. Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
I'm Steve.
Mr. Hollinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, in case. Sean, let me ask you this. Since our, we're having so much grow, I mean, are they going to issue Delaware City any more licenses or are they all going to have to trex them in?
Well, you know, it was interesting, in 2013, my first year here, we actually did have a situation where, I don't know which business it was, you, Dave. We had a, oh, it was 12 West. They were seeking to open their restaurant. There were no D5s available. We actually submitted our population figures because our planning department does a fantastic job of monitoring population based on housing permits. The Division of Liquor Control actually took that number and issued one, new D5, based on the higher population than what their Census Bureau's estimates are. So it didn't allow us at that point. Otherwise, you would really be waiting in between census. So we do have a census coming up. Unfortunately, hopefully, it'll say that we're in a much different spot than, you know, what we currently are estimated to be at, but you are...
I had another business call me last week needing one, needing a liquor license. And so I think if they haven't done it since 12 West, we've got it a lot in our homes. So I don't know whether he should go this way or whether he's going to need to trex it in.
I mean, we can always submit our population estimates and see if they would add another. I honestly don't know what the threshold points are. Those aren't really published anyplace, so...
It might be good to look into it. I don't want any of our businesses to delete. We just want to keep adding themself.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Elaine. 11, 12, and 13.
Ordinance number 18-50, an ordinance for Manos Properties for approval of a rezoning amendment for the Wesland Inn on approximately 1.09 acres. Parcels number 519-433-04-005-000 and 519-433-04-039-002. From POI Planned Office Institutional District in R3, one-family residential district, POI and R3 PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district at 235 and 239 West Williams Street. Ordinance number 18-51, an ordinance for Manos Properties for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district, to be established for the Wesland Inn on approximately 1.09 acres. Parcels number 519-433-04-005-000 and 519-433-04-039-002 at 235 and 239 West Williams Street. And ordinance number 18-52, an ordinance for Manos Properties for approval of preliminary development plan for the Wesland Inn on approximately 1.09 acres. Parcels 519-433-04-005-000 and 519-433-04-002 on a property zone POI and R3 PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district at 235 and 239 West Williams Street.
Just for the record, I don't think you ever need to read parcel numbers again. They're out there, they're in parentheses. It doesn't need beans to any of us in this room. So just say, I mean, I am perfectly fine with picking. We're done with parcel numbers. Okay. Ms. Schaefer?
Madam Mayor, members of council and clerk, I'm sorry that we put parcel numbers in there, but...
I'm sorry, too. Put them in parentheses.
They're actually very, they're actually very germane to this case because the two parcels are specifically dotted within the zoning district overlay. And so it's important to make sure of what we're talking about. Not only today, where we all may understand the parcels, but, you know, in future years when parcel lines change and you may have different staff and even owners and that sort of thing. So, but I realize they're difficult to read, so I appreciate your efforts. In the intervening time since the last meeting, last reading of the case, the applicant has gone back with our engineering department and just taken a look at the access plan a little bit. This is where we were. This is where we were in terms of on the east side of the property, having an out only, and on the west side of the parking lot, having an in and out, and then turn lanes, perhaps bump-ins for parking, et cetera, and, and perhaps some significant widening of Williams Street. So in the intervening weeks, and this is zoomed in portion of the site plan, access plan, really, the engineering department and the applicant's engineer have taken a look, and really gone back to an initial conversation about moving this driveway that's on the east side just a bit to the west and allowing in only on this side, creating a sufficient turn lane with respect to that driveway, but also allowing sufficient stacking to Elizabeth Street. No change to the north side of Sandusky Street, no parking bump-ins or bump-outs or any of that kind of stuff. And then on this piece of property that the applicant has an option on, really is where the improvements on South Sandusky would start. You see this line, this taper line right here, and then those would run to the east. And this is the fall plan, that was included in your packet, but would run to the east, really with some striping and that sort of thing, and a little bit of the curb being cut. Sure, the city engineer can go in more detail if you like. I do want to also note for you, and I'll back up one more slide. So what are the advantages, what are the site plan changes with respect...
Dave, I gotta say, that'll all drive me crazy.
I'm sorry. That's the only pointer I got.
I can't follow the thing you're doing.
That's the only pointer I got, so I don't... So what are the site plan changes that I think is a, is a good outcome of the change in access is that the handicap parking was proposed for here with the big retaining walls, the front of the, the site, the front yard of the site. And so with the change in access, I want to use the, the light there, Chris, but with the change in access, the handicap moves up the hill, up the slope, and towards the front of the canopy here, leaving the front yard, really, front yard, much more so than the plan that you had seen previously. Those were the two biggest changes. Other than that, the proposal remains the same, to preserve the Perkins House, to add the proposed in to the back of it and have parking on the western parcel. I did provide a couple of thoughts and notes with respect to questions and comments that I think primarily council had brought up, but others have brought up through the process with respect to what exactly are we doing here? What exactly are we changing here? One advantage of a planned mixed-use overlay is it's, it's exactly that, the last word. It's an overlay of the existing zoning districts. And so the POI district, where the Perkins House is and where the in would be, would remain POI. And the parking lot for that use is on the parcel to the west, and that would remain R3. The PMU simply sits on top of both of those zoning districts and actually further restricts the uses in the case, both of these cases, rather severely over what's allowed in both of those districts today. In particular with the R3, it restricts it, would restrict it, if you were to approve it, to just a parking lot or open space. And if you were to approve it as presented, it would take the further step of using the PMU vehicle, would allow us to place, require applicant to place a covenant on that parking lot property to further restrict it, not just in zoning, but in an actual land covenant, to parking or open space. And that's it on that side. So provided a couple other thoughts for you in that regard. There is a section of our zoning code that frankly hasn't been used since I've been here, and I don't think has been widely used, but section 1161.04 would allow parking within 300 feet of a use if that, the use, the lot on which the use is proposed is too small to accommodate the parking. And again, it just hasn't come up, at least in my time here. It's, it's pretty rare. Usually we have parking associated with the use and on the same parcel, but that could be available to the applicant if this approach is taken out. We, we weren't asked for that, the applicant wasn't asked, planning commission hasn't been asked for, for that section of the code yet, but you should know it's, it's out there and potentially possible. I think, my professional opinion, using the planned mixed-use overlay doesn't change those underlying zoning districts and gets us, as a city, more control over this proposed development than we would otherwise have using any other method. That's really the changes I have, but maybe the applicant has something to say as well.
Nick, Cal Asian, 6601 Reflections Drive, Dublin, Ohio, 43017, the civil engineer for the project. So we've kind of batted this round back and forth with the City of Delaware Engineering Department, and we cleaned this up to a lot better presentation that has the minimal impact to the surrounding parcels. You can see where the taper begins on the west side. It starts at Jim's Western Parcel. If it helps, I can point things out. We, we did have the, the two-way turn further to the west, but by shifting it further to the east, we start that transition closer to the parcel and doesn't impact neighbors. And so that allows us then to have an entryway on the east side, which is a benefit, obviously, to the owner, but also to the impact to the neighbors. We wouldn't be impacting any of the on-street parking that currently exists on the north I did elongate both drives for this, for this property. I did eliminate two spaces on the west side to elongate the drive. We had some concerns, maybe that with the slope and with the flatness that we would need for the sidewalk, that those would be addressed. And then on the, the eastern side, we elongated that with the placement of the handicap spaces on the eastern side of the parcel. So it really cleaned things up, I think, from our presentation, but it also helped with, you know, the surrounding neighborhood. We do have to do some improvements to the east on the roadway with striping, some transition the next block over, but they're pretty minor. There will be some impacts to some of the traffic lighting and, and signals and stuff at the intersection, but overall, I think this is going to be a better impact. It's going to allow for more flow back and forth through the intersection. You've got some additional capacity now for stack for that left-hand turn lane onto, I believe it's Elizabeth. They can use that, that two-way turn left if that's available for stack. So all in all, I think this is the, the very best plan that we could have come up with that puts the minimal impact on the neighbors and does what we want it to do. So if there's any questions about the site, why we did certain things, or what's been changed, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I want to thank you for taking back to the drawing board and doing what you heard the neighbors wanting you to do, taking it off of the other side, putting it over your side. I appreciate that, and now trying to make it all clear so the rest of us can understand a little bit better. So, thank you. Anybody from your staff that wants to say anything else or anything? No? Okay. Any questions for the applicants at all, or Dave? Okay, this is the fifth reading. What is the wish of council?
I move the vote on ordinance number 1850.
Okay.
Who do you want, three of us or...
No, it's all right.
Second.
Should we have some discussion? For me, my concern is with the zone change. In order to change a zoning in a residential area to a commercial use, I'd like to see more support from the neighbors, and certainly from what I've heard, don't have that support to change that zoning, and so that's a major concern for me. I've heard from a number of constituents who have a lot of concerns about the zone change.
Darren, from following up on what Lisa just said, if ordinance 1850 and 1851 were voted down, 1852 couldn't pass either because the preliminary plan includes the parking lot, which would require the first to pass or to be...
Right. I, I think we've had similar situations where they're all kind of linked, you couldn't proceed with the plan if you don't have that piece of the puzzle. Dave, would you agree with, with that statement? If the plan includes the parking and you can't do the parking, then the plan is not going to work.
I don't think it makes much sense using the planned mixed-use overlay to separate those all.
I recognize and appreciate the extreme measures that the Manos team has taken trying to make this work, but I just can't get over that hurdle.
He has every right to tear that down and put up a five-story hotel. Everybody realizes that.
Absolutely.
Neighbors realize that, right?
What happens to the parking lot?
You can put it underneath if you chose to. You can put up a five-story hotel, and there we lose the Perkins building. And I think that's important in Delaware. So he's willing to put, sink his money into this to restore the front half of it and keep the history of it to the best of the ability. He's offered the neighbors everything he possibly can to make them happy. So... And the other discussion?
Yeah, just a couple things, if I could. Anytime we do a project, there's always people in the immediate area that are most affected, and they're, of course, most concerned, and we've had this with a number of projects, these people, projects and others. I think Mr. Manos has done everything he can do to address those concerns, but I think we have to consider more than just that. We have to consider the value of Perkins' property, Perkins' house, I mean, it's in total state of disrepair now, and it's going to be restored here. So I think you have to consider the overall good and the Delaware needed downtown hotel. And this particular area, I would feel differently about Lisa's concern, and these were all single-family homes there, but you've got Sandusky Hall right in that neighborhood. And the parking, the way it's designed now, in my opinion, minimizes some of the concerns that the neighbors brought up. They redesigned the traffic to minimize those concerns. So I just think in terms of the overall good, what we're accomplishing here, I understand the neighbors' concerns, but I think a lot has been done to address those, and I think we need to also consider the overall good and the value to the city of having this project done.
If I could add one thing, if you don't mind. And I'm not an engineer by any stretch of the imagination, but I will quote the city engineer that said that this design actually improves the traffic on Williams Street. I own brown jug storage and was paid by the city to get five or six feet or whatever it was last, this year. And this is my dime. I'm paying for improvement on Williams Street, a lot of it. So, you know, I'm all in. I am purchasing the home next to it, I'm going to screen it, I think it'll be a beautiful addition to the city. I mean, the plans for the interior motif of sports memorabilia and brown jug memorabilia and things in that niche, I think it'd be a great, great addition to the town. So, I mean, I'm really excited to do it, and I will do it. It's just, is it going to be the Perkins House or not?
I drove in behind it, off of, you know, through the Wesleyan area, and it looks horrible today. And I could not believe the amount of trees that screened us from the neighbors that I've heard complaints about. It just, I guess I just don't understand it. I know nobody ever wants it in their own backyard. I just think it would be a wonderful addition.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, I'm asking, I think it's 49 feet from the property line, or the narrowness of that lot, but... That's all I got.
Okay.
My point, it's got nothing to do with the hotel, I have no problem with the hotel. My point is the precedent-setting change in residential zoning. That's it.
How would you address that in terms of this, the issue of precedent-setting, Darren?
You have the right to build the hotel, I acknowledge that, you know. My issue's not that at all. But I also point out, you know, I'm not falling for the poor Perkins' house because no one's ever, ever talked about it until this came up, you know. It's, now all of a sudden, it's, you know, you know, Perkins, oh, it's such a tragedy, it's been disrepair, when it's never, ever mentioned in any time until this came up.
Well, Wesley's always owned it, and it's been a dormitory.
Yeah, but it's always looked like junk, you know, it's never complained about it.
To answer your question, Tom, I, I've always maintained that rezoning is a legislative decision. That was kind of a prior debate we had, to which case it's kind of up to the decision of, of city council based on the factors that, you know, that they're allowed to consider. So I'm less concerned about precedent than some other people might be. Now, we've had other applicants and litigants come in and say, well, you've, you've done this, and so you need to do this for me, but I think Dave and I have usually said that the rezoning, it's strictly a legislative decision that is in the purview of council. So is it impossible that someone would come back and say you did this for this when we want it? No, but I don't know if they could force us to. Dave, do you have something to add to that, or are we in agreement on that?
No, we're in agreement on that. I do, again, think this is probably, if, if this is to be approved, this is the strongest method to do that. And the applicant, if it's not approved, we'll have to go back and decide whether they want to try to bring this back in a revamp format, or even maybe exercising some of their other rights under the zoning code that may afford us less opportunity for control ultimately over the bill. Just a couple things, I think.
Any other comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
You have a motion, that's second?
Yeah.
Who's second?
Yeah.
I thought you asked a question, you... Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Browning, we have a second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call.
Mr. Jones?
This is, this, did he say it was on...
1850.
No.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
No.
Mr. Rohr?
No.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for vote on ordinance number 1851. Second.
Motion by Mr. Browning, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
No.
Mr. Rohr?
No.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for vote on ordinance number 1852. Second.
Motion by Mr. Browning, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
No.
Mr. Rohr?
No.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Yes, motion was defeated.
Just to be clear, Councilman Jones asked if it required a supermajority. That is only in the case of a denial that it's being overturned to approve.
What are my options? I mean, I can tear the building down tomorrow and build a five-story hotel, but I have to go back through this process.
But there's no rezoning.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Just don't understand. Thanks.
I'm sorry. You may not feel, I'll be giving the moment to leave.
They're all Platts and Plans.
Correct.
Want to read all those from the record?
You ready?
Yep. Go ahead. Can we shut that door, please?
Ordinance number 18-65, an ordinance approving a final development plan request by Glenross North LLC for Glenross North Sections 2 through 4, containing 127 single-family lots on approximately 65.81 acres located just east of Glen Parkway and north of the Glenross Golf Club, on property zone R2 PMU, one-family residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district. on property zone R2 PMU, one-family residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district. Ordinance number 18-66, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat request by Glen Ross North LLC for Glen Ross North Section 2, containing 48 single-family lots on approximately 28.726 acres on property zone R2 PMU, one-family residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on Irvine Loop, Delano Drive, Sycamore Lane, Irvine Way, and Blake Moore Drive, or excuse me, Blackmore Drive. Ordinance number 18-67, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat request by Glen Ross North LLC for Glen Ross North Section 3, containing 44 single-family lots on approximately 17.930 acres on property zone R2 PMU, one-family residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on Blackmore Drive, Winley Court, and Melick Drive. An ordinance number 18-68, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat request by Glen Ross North LLC for Glen Ross North Section 4, containing 35 single-family lots on approximately 19.157 acres on property zone R2 PMU, one-family residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on Melick Drive and Irvine Way. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, these cases are, as read, it's a final development plan for the remaining sections of Glen Ross North, Sections 2 through 4, on about 68 acres, comprising 127 single-family dwelling units and the seven-acre Central Park, as planned in this development from the beginning. And that's followed by three final subdivision Platts for the remaining Sections 2, 3, and 4. Perhaps given us an indication of how robust the housing market is here that we're seeing multiple sections come through for final development plan and plat at the same time. But this is located on the north end of Glen Parkway, east of Glen Parkway. It is owned as a planned mixed-use overlay district. There are photographs should we need it of the sections in question. And just to remind you, this was the approved preliminary plan. You see Section 1 here on the bottom of the screen and then Sections 2 through 4, including the park on the rest of the screen. The final development plan comprises Sections 2 through 4, including the seven-acre park. In the intervening time from original approval, a pool has been added, some parking, playscape, and some open field space to this park as well, making it somewhat unique, I think, to our development portfolio. And very quickly, I know this is in your packet, very difficult to see on the screen, but this is the final plat for Section 2, comprising 48 single-family homes. Section 3 comprising 44 single-family homes. And along the railroad tracks of this, of this section will be a 10-to-12-foot undulated mound, similar to what you see at Glen Ross and communities at Glen Ross to provide some buffer to the railroad tracks. And a final subdivision plat for Section 4, comprising 35 single-family homes with some open space and detention area. The planning commission did recommend the unanimous approval of these cases. As the staff, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Does the applicant here that would like to come forward at this time add anything?
Hi, Brian Pringer, 5500 Old New Road, Columbus, Ohio. I don't have anything to add.
Any questions for the applicant? Any motions?
It's final. Motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance, I lost my place. 1866?
Five.
65?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of 1865.
Sir.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of 1866.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Wait a second. Didn't I already do that?
No, I did this first one.
First one.
Move to suspend the rules on 1866.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of 1866.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 18-67.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of 1867.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 18-68.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of 1868.
Sir.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion, guys. Good luck.
Thanks.
Do we read item 18, consideration of ordinance number 18-69?
Ordinance number 18-69, an ordinance approving a rezoning amendment request by Joshua Morgan Construction LLC at 1354 State Route 521, from A1 Agricultural District to R3 One Family Residential District on approximately 2.091 acres.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is a first reading. Will be presented at your next meeting.
I hope you'll read 19, 20, 21, and 22, 3, 24. I'll just stop at 24.
Ordinance number 18-70, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a rezoning amendment for the Seattle House Apartments, 240 units, on approximately 24.212 acres from R6 Multi-Family Residential District and B3 Community Business District to R6 and B3 PMU, Plan Mixed Use Overlay District, and located on the north side of US 3637 and the south side of Bowtown Road, just east of the Chesron Auto Storage Lot. Ordinance number 18-71, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU, Plan Mixed Use Overlay District, to be established for the Seattle House Apartments, 240 units, on approximately 24.212 acres, and located on the north side of US 3637 and the south side of Bowtown Road, just east of the Chesron Auto Storage Lot. Ordinance number 18-72, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of preliminary development plan for the Seattle House Apartments, 240 units, on approximately 24.212 acres, zoned R6 and B3 PMU, multi-family residential district and community business district with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of US 3637 and the south side of Bowtown Road, just east of the Chesron Auto Storage Lot. An ordinance number 18-73, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a rezoning amendment for the High Point Place Apartments, 160 units, on approximately 16.70 acres, from R6 Multi-Family Residential District to R6 PMU, multi-family residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of Bowtown Road, just west of Village Gate Apartments. An ordinance number 18-74, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU, Plan Mixed Use Overlay District, to be established for the High Point Place Apartments, 160 units, on approximately 16.70 acres, and located on the north side of Bowtown Road, just west of Village Gate Apartments. An ordinance number 18-75, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of preliminary development plan for the High Point Place Apartments, 160 units, on approximately 16.70 acres, zoned R6 PMU, multi-family residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of Bowtown Road, just west of Village Gate Apartments. Good.
Madam Mayor, members of council, these are first readings and will be presented at your next meeting.
Okay. Item 25, consideration of ordinance number 18-76.
Ordinance number 18-76, an ordinance supplementing the 2018 appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for the renovation of City Hall and the City Hall Annex and to make improvements to the parking lot east of the City Hall Annex Building. Mr. Souths?
Thank you, Mayor Riggle. We had a discussion at the last Finance Committee meeting about some issues related to completing some of the talked-about improvements to the building next door referred to as City Hall Annex. City Hall, some safety improvements, security improvements to the building, and also an issue came up, suggestion about possibly putting a parking lot to the east of the City Hall Annex. And what I wanted to lay out for the Finance Committee, and we had some discussion, was to look at what it might take from a financial standpoint to accomplish those improvements. Council's already approved the improvements that are now currently going on in the building, the City Hall Annex, the basement, and the first floor for Cohatch. City Council also approved supplemental appropriation earlier this year to improve the second floor to a state of not quite occupancy, but dealing with some of the windows and some of the other HVAC things that made sense to do while we're improving the other building. There was discussion at the time whether we'd come back in some phased approach and perhaps make improvements to the second floor there. What I presented to the Finance Committee, and I believe it was attached in your packet, is an analysis of what this might mean to us moving forward. Plus, I updated where we currently stand with some of the cost estimates that we have involved. I'll just walk through that fairly quickly. Feel free to interrupt if you have any questions. It's basically three summary pages. And the first page, Identified Finance Committee Meeting, City Building Improvements at the top, lists out the total estimated cost of the improvements, broken down by the Cohatch improvements, which I referred to as the basement and first floor of the Annex Building to the east. The second-floor Annex improvements, which were a part of getting it to that point, not quite for occupancy, but making some of the structural changes to coincide with what was done on the first and second floor. Those costs were estimated at $615,000. The current estimate for those improvements is $605,500. Then I added a couple of other categories. One is to take the City Hall Annex Building to the east and make renovations such that we could move in and use the space. Those costs are estimated roughly at $231,000. The second new category is City Hall renovations and security alterations, our improvements to this building, primarily to address access flow through the building. But we've had some work done on security measures, trying to get, you know, the building up to a point where, in today's times, that it has some security functions. Those improvements are estimated at $218,000. And then the last category is just some rough estimates, what it might take to take down the engineering building and install a parking lot. Those costs are estimated at $328,000. So the total with all three improvements, even going back to the Cohatch cost, is $2.578 million. Moving to the second sheet of analysis, I wanted to look at, because at the time when we were approving the original improvements, you know, there were some discussions about where some funding might come from, how we might offset some of that cost. So I'm taking that $2.5 million cost estimate, and what we can do is allocate about a half a million dollars, the existing municipal impact fee funds that we have on hand. Recall, we have impact fees for parks, fire, police, and municipal buildings. We've been using the municipal building revenue that's come in to service the debt for expansions we made at the Justice Center partially and also the Public Works Facility, which we can use those funds to increase our capacity. We can't necessarily use them to maintain buildings. Obviously, making improvements to that Gazette Building increases our available capacity. So those funds are eligible to be used for that purpose. The $500,000 is an amount that represents the fund balance or portion of that fund balance that we could allocate to it upfront. So the remainder is a little over $2 million that we have to find a way to either finance or pay for. I've laid out an analysis going out several years, looking at cash flow. And as you're aware, the Cohatch improvements will also be receiving annual rent of roughly $78,000 initially. Then I added a second revenue line there for future, a portion of future municipal impact fees at a pretty conservative level. And so there's $113,000 of revenue that we could use to offset. The debt service to finance the $2 million is about $172,000 a year. I believe I went up 15 years with that. So the difference is what, in essence, we would need to come up with to make sure we could service the debt to borrow, the money we borrowed to make the improvements and complete the projects, complete all of them, including Cohatch, the second floor of the Annex, the improvements to this building, and the parking facility. That difference is about $59,000 a year. And at the bottom of that sheet, I kind of broke down where, what makes up that $59,000. If you recall, when we originally talked about the Cohatch project, we knew there was going to be a gap, even if we don't do any other improvements. And that gap was going to be about a little over $20,000 a year. So incrementally, by finishing off all the phases at this time and moving forward, completing the projects, there's an additional $38,500 over a 15-year period that we'll need to find resources for. The third sheet is, I just took a, basically a snapshot of our current, not our soon-to-be-proposed five-year capital plan, as it applied to some of our improvements that are paid for with general fund money. It's what we would probably need to tap into. And it just shows the top half of the summary page that you've seen with our capital plan. And one of the things that we're aware of is we do have existing debt outstanding that we're, will be paying off. The last payment on that is in 2022, and it's about $275,000 a year. And that was for the streetscape improvement that we entered into several years ago. In addition, we had borrowed some money to make improvements to South Halp Road, and that debt will also be paid off in 2022. So I then looked at what might be a scenario where we could move on these projects now. And again, this is just a way and kind of measures what the impact may be from a cash flow standpoint, moving forward. I looked at it and said, yeah, that's three or that's four years that before that debt's paid off, but we could tap into our general reserve fund that we have set aside, somewhat for purposes like this, where we need to use that as a buffer to balance out improvements over an extended period of time. So we would pull in that $59,285 a year for 2019, 20, 21, and 22 to pay the gap between the revenue streams and what we have available and the projected debt service. and what we have available and the debt, you know, projected debt service, with the intent, then, once that debt rolls off, we'll be able to then allocate not only the fifty-nine, two eighty-five payment, but also reimburse that, that four-year advance from the general reserve fund. And so, bottom line, that kind of looks at it one scenario, again, if council's so inclined to move on the project and complete it all, where we could do it, and at least at this point in time, it wouldn't, you know, require any changes, at least to our current capital plans in place. Obviously, that debt service rolling off in two thousand and twenty-two, rather than using thirty-eight thousand dollars to finish off the projects, we could use it for something else, but the intent was just to kind of show how this might work over, over a period of time. I believe the, and the Finance Committee members can speak for themselves, but at the meeting, I think they voted to, to have the, the issue of whether to go ahead and complete the, all the improvements and finish off the improvements to the, to the, to the buildings here, to City Council for consideration. Entertaining questions you may have?
And you didn't mention, I see that the restrooms in here, but you really didn't talk about it, but it is in our package, this includes the restroom that we put there.
It includes an estimate, and if you go back to that first page, it's, you know, it reflects, A, demoing the house, constructing the parking lot, and then building some variation of restrooms and, and, I don't know, I hate to say a shell, but not a shelter house, but a, you know, shelter, bench, those sort of things that I believe City, a couple of councilmen talked about that they thought might, might be kind of a, you know, an area as you drive into the city, and that area might.
Well, the reason I said this, because the people, the audience, don't know, don't see what we see, anybody who might be listening, do not see what we see. So I'm just trying to make sure that everything's out there in the open, and we are transparent.
Right. There's also some money in there for landscaping, and again, as, as the discussion had kind of occurred, it's, it's kind of an entry point as you come into the downtown, and then that was one of the, the intents, I think, with perhaps moving forward with the improvements.
I mean, really, this accomplishes three important goals for the city. One is to increase municipal parking, add a downtown amenity, which I think is increasingly in demand in our downtown, whether it's a farmer's market Saturday, or a first Friday, or any other number of nights a week, when you have people that might be seeking a place to park, a public restroom, which we would maintain, we would regulate. In addition, it adds, addresses security enhancements to the City Hall, which have been overdue and we need to address. The City Hall renovations took place over twenty years ago. These help update that. We've really made no material improvements to this building and over that, in that period of time. So adding capacity is also something we would be able to do with the finishing off of the second floor of the Gazette Building. This would require the demolition of the engineering building. We've reached out to the Historic Preservation Commission. They're aware that we're going to be discussing this. We'll be back before them to address their questions that came up last September, when we floated the idea of taking that building down. They asked us to do a market study about it. They asked us to look into the feasibility of leasing it, of selling it. We've done that. We'll, we'll be prepared to go before them. But this really is a comprehensive way to address a number of important things for the community, not the least of which is the downtown parking, which is continually comes up as a, as a survey, in our surveys of our public, what to do, plus the amenity of some sort of a public restroom. So it's a first reading tonight, and I.
Tell me another thing we talked about in Finance is the idea that we're doing a bunch of work over there now. It makes sense, given what Dean has done financially, to do it all now as opposed to piecemeal and be part of it, and then try to come back two years from now and do more so he can spell the continuity of the whole project. That makes some sense, and he's the only way to do it that's economically.
And if Jackie were here tonight, she's been a real staunch advocate of this, of this approach, taking advantage of the market. We did, in the last couple of weeks, were able to, with Dean's assistance, address the financing of how you would do this, so it would have the least impact on the city's financial condition.
I said at the point at the Finance Committee that, and I'll say it again tonight, that I think Dean did an excellent job putting this together, put this plan together, so well done.
Definitely.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Dean? Mr. Souths? All righty, but we'll bring this back for another reading then.
Yeah.
I want to.
Thank you.
Elaine, if you'll do consideration, ordinance number eighteen dash seventy-seven. Ordinance number eighteen dash seventy-seven, an ordinance determining that the petition for the establishment of the Terra Alta Community Authority complies as to form and substance with the requirements of Section three forty-nine point zero-three of the Ohio Revised Code, and to fix a date and place for the public hearing on that petition and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and to timely advance consideration of the petition of the developer to enable the city to receive the full benefit of the proposed development. Mr. Shaw.
Really briefly, briefly, Madam Mayor, members of council, as City Manager Homan indicated earlier, this is sort of the first of a two-step process. What this is saying is we've got a sufficient petition to move forward, and staff has reviewed the petition, and it is completely outside, outside council reviewed that for us, because it's a little outside my wheelhouse. So this is, this is what council will take, you know, the, now the petition's been filed, we have to have that hearing within forty days. We've just scheduled that earlier, so there will be another piece of legislation that council will decide if they want to adopt to allow the NCA, but this was just saying council finds that the petition is complete with all the legal requirements. Am I missing anything, Dave, from your perspective?
No, sir.
And you'll notice, if you've read the petition, that there is a, there is a suggested millage rate that they're putting in there. Determining sufficiency does not necessarily determine that that's the appropriate millage, and that's something that, at some point, either this evening or a subsequent meeting, we need some, some feedback from City Council about the public policy question of the NCA itself, and then the millage rate that has been requested, because what they've requested is the seven point five mils, which is the same millage that we put in place for our other two NCA's, but as you know, those were put in place for different reasons than this one. So that's a discussion we'll need to have, and if there's a change, there is a process for.
Well, and I guess just to dig a little bit more into process, so the way this works is they file a petition requesting, and part of that petition includes the area and the millage and the signatures. Council doesn't really have the authority to amend that, because all you're doing is saying we're granting the petition, or and the petition is sufficient. So what Tom was referring to is if it comes out that council doesn't like the numbers, the only way to really process that is to have the, council can allow the applicant to amend that petition, or if council's not inclined to do that, council can say, we're just going to vote no, and come back next time with something we're happy with. That would restart the clock and probably not be the most developer-friendly route to it, so council could allow the petitioners to amend that petition, so that would be the only real way to change that number, otherwise, all you can do is approve it or not approve it, is my understanding. And that's assuming you don't like a weight.
Right. And this is also a permanent?
The weight is written right now, it's seven point five mils, permanent.
And what if we, as council, say we don't want permanent, we want until the debt is paid off?
Same thing, they would have to amend their petition, and they would, it'd probably be a simple matter of submitting the new petition with the signatures and just that part changed.
And that's really what we need some feedback on, is that, because I think, in the inter, in the, in the next couple of weeks, I think if that was the direction, then we would have to discuss that with the applicant and get back to, get back to City Council. But the threshold question is the use of this vehicle for the purposes that they've recommended. If the answer to that first question is yes, we would consider that as a vehicle, then the question is, what's the appropriate dollar amount, and how long should that be in place? And that's a, that's a process of evaluating what those, what those costs are that they've identified, whether they're utility costs, whether they're amenities to the project, such as the clubhouse and all of the other things that they've indicated. So this, you know, getting some feedback, again, would be helpful to know.
I have a question, Paris, just to understand what you said, that we can't amend. So I'm trying, we got two steps. One is we simply say that the petition is sufficient.
Yeah, and that's probably a very easy decision, because we've reviewed it, and it is actually sufficient.
Which we would not approve it unless we were comfortable with the terms on the second.
Yes. I mean, I guess if you wanted to really squash it, you could say it's insufficient, but legally, I think it is, so you probably should vote, it is sufficient. It's the second piece of legislation that approves or adopts the NCA, where you would say, no, or we want to change it.
And then they would have to agree that the petition get changed.
Yeah, if you were inclined to pass something, but not the whole kit and caboodle, that would be where you'd have that debate before that second one. But the petition is what locked that in, so they'd have to amend the petition, even if you wanted to amend that second piece of legislation, all it does is say, we're granting it. So you have to decide what you're going to grant.
Any other questions from Dan at this time? Okay. Item twenty-seven is consideration of ordinance number eighteen dash seventy-eight.
Twenty-five.
Pardon?
Was it twenty-five? You just said twenty-seven.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven. Oh, this is twenty-seven. Backpage two. Oh, yeah, it does.
Oh. Groundhog Day.
You're the first.
We're doing consideration of ordinance eighteen dash seventy-eight. Elaine's on vacation, that's all.
Yeah, this is a trial run for Kim.
You said it, I did it. She did fantastic. Ordinance number eighteen dash seventy-eight is ordinance supplementing the two thousand and eighteen appropriations ordinance to provide funding to complete a trail segment on Cheshire Road. Get anything?
Madam Mayor, members of council, this came up, a resident had called in and asked about completing that trail segment along Cheshire Road, and so we looked into it, and timing was of, the essence on this one is, there was a county grant that was available, and so all the factors of this fit in with the county plan, and so we applied for the grant, and we were awarded the grant, which is basically a fifty percent grant, it covers fifty percent of the costs. So we're asking for a supplemental to put this trail in this year. The grant requires the money to be spent this year. And it would go across three lots. All three landowners are agreeable to this, they are, they want the trail, and it would connect two portions where, or it would connect where the trail ends at either end at this point. So if there's any questions, I can.
We're trying to get that up on the screen right now, so.
Does it need an emergency clause?
I believe it does need an emergency clause, but.
Yeah. Yeah, because the county would like us to, whether we're going to move forward with the grant or not at this point.
We would ordinarily not request that, but in this case, given the fact that the county has this timeline, which is the end of their calendar year, end of their fiscal year, which is the end of December, time is of the essence.
I guess my first question for Ted is, do they need the emergency clause, or does us passing it, but knowing that we have to wait for the referendum, is that close enough?
Wait for the.
When we don't pass an emergency clause, it can't take effect for thirty days, but it has passed. Is that enough, or do they need it to become effective before?
No, we'll, we'll be all right without that, I think, without the emergency clause. Yeah. I think their whole issue is, is the city going to be good for the.
Exactly, whether they're committed to it.
You could go to another reading if you'd like. I just think it's, it would, it's a small amount of, the dollar amount is not a lot. We don't have an objection from the property owners. Typically, when we do a trail project, if you can get the consent of the property owners, that's half the challenge. We have that in this case.
And that was the reason it didn't go through in the first place, is there was a former property owner that didn't want the trail to go across their front yard.
Yeah. So this will connect source point with, where, Dave, you can, there it is, that section right there, which is really, it's a small piece, but it's a fairly critical piece when you talk about connectivity.
Right, and it's, and it's, the trail across down Cheshire East, East-West route is a major component of the region, like the county regional plan, so that's another reason the county is on board with granting this.
Any questions for Ted? Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on eighteen seventy-eight.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Howlinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of eighteen seventy-eight.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Howlinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item twenty-six is City Manager's.
Yes, I have a couple of items regarding the Delaware Knox, Marion, Morrow Solid Waste District, DKMM, in connection with our recycling program and the discussions we've been having with Sims Brothers Recycling, who is our current provider. I will be attending a meeting tomorrow of the Solid Waste District to talk about the issue and how it impacts Delaware. Marion representatives will be there as well. We're evaluating all of our options. At the same time, Delaware County is evaluating their options with regards to their solid waste transfer station. They have a report that recommends a number of improvements that could be beneficial to the city, so they will be represented. Mike Fromer, the county administrator, will be there tomorrow as well, talking about the importance of the upgrades and also the importance of having the city as part of that partnership, is, in what they're, what they're going to be laying out. So I hopefully will be able to report back to City Council in the next couple of weeks with what some of our options are going to be regarding our recycling program and how we're going to approach that. Delaware Now, which is a group that was put in place about a year and a half ago to promote Delaware County as a place to do business, has, looking at doing a study of the U.S. twenty-three quarter. They have, they're about to retain MKSK, a consulting firm, to do that project. They're going to be putting in place, I believe, a task force or steering committee to assist with that process. They will be reaching out to the mayor and council about getting representation on that, so that's a, I think it's a good, positive step to take a look at what our options are with the U.S. twenty-three quarter, even though a lot of the, the options, we don't have a whole lot of options, but hopefully something positive will come out of that. CIP is due to City Council on, on Wednesday, and will be presented to you then, and then we'll schedule some, some hearings, not hearings, but some work sessions to discuss that. And lastly, we haven't met since the Ironman, and I want to just thank my staff and Mayor Riggle and everybody else who worked very, very hard to make that event a success. This was the third year of our three-year agreement. We were very, very pleased, I believe Ironman was, they had over two thousand participants. We will be having a debrief meeting with our staff and with Ironman, just to talk about things that could even make it better next year, and we are in the process of negotiating a new three-year renewal. But I think it just brings a lot of people into this community. We get a lot of very, very positive feedback. I know Carolyn was on the, you know, on the ground for several, several days, actually, leading up to it, and the day of the event, and so just happy to report that I think it went well, and my team placed sixteen out of a hundred for the relay.
Very good. Cruxel comments, Mr. Jones?
I think I'll pass tonight, thank you.
Just reflecting on the agenda and the vote this evening, there seems to be, I guess, a sense of entitlement, it feels to me, about rezonings lately, and that we're going to approve rezonings, and our decisions are yes or no, so no is always an option when we're making these decisions, and on tonight's agenda, we have four rezonings, just tonight. And just, I can't help but think that we're seeing this more and more, and that we have zoning for a reason, and that developers know what our regulations are when they purchase these pieces of property. And if our zoning is no longer appropriate, I think we need to take a look at that in a comprehensive way, but to continue to piecemeal these zone changes, parcel by parcel by parcel, is making me increasingly uncomfortable. And that's just my general thought on all the rezoning requests that we have coming up, and it just seems like there is an increase in the number, and I'm growing concerned about that. If we need to look at our zoning code in a comprehensive way, I think we need to do that, if it's no longer appropriate.
You going to chime in, or you just going to sit there quietly?
Process.
I'm going to sit here quietly and not.
Okay.
Good call.
Okay. Mr. Browning? Mr. Browning?
I'm on a second. Councilwoman's, Keller's remarks. And then on a separate issue, I don't have to literally go exactly right, so excuse me, but Dean's department's state auditor came in, and they're flourishing language that goes along the lines of no findings. And basically, in the world of auditing, I think that's out of a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being the highest. I think that's about a nine, nine and a half. And so I think he deserves a little more public acknowledgement about he and his department the job they do.
Well done.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Mr. Keller?
A couple things real quick. One is I got the email regarding the small cell installation. I would love to have like an executive summary, like the pros and cons, because I started reading that thing, I thought, there's. So that would.
Yeah.
My other, more important thing is, we kind of haven't had the chance to have any work sessions, but we talked today, we'll have one for the access dollar thing. At some point, I would love to have Dave just kind of give us an overview of zoning so we understand a little bit more about what all these zoning things mean and, you know, I mean, we have a general idea, but I think at least for my sake, I'd like to know more about that and understand it better, so these decisions come before us and get better. I certainly understand Lisa's concern, but I also think that sometimes circumstances change and areas change, and I'd just like to understand more about how that whole zoning process works. And then the other point in regard to this, whether the NCA, provided if we decide that we're going to approve that, we had talked in the past about some potential local ordinances to control when it's appropriate to use that. I'd like to maybe see if they're going to take a shot at, at least thinking about how we might go about that. So if we decide it's a positive thing, I'm sure we want to have some parameters on when it's appropriate as well.
That's a good point. I'd like to volunteer, Dave, to help move that because I think one of the questions council brought up when you had the first discussion was, well, we don't necessarily do this all the time. So if I can, maybe Dave and I could work on something.
I think that would be helpful as we discuss this even, to know that there's controls to put on.
I think not just controls, it's too, how many houses, but at what point do you ask for it? I mean, after the infrastructure's done and then you come in, that's where I'm struggling with this one. So. Well, I agree with Tom that Ironman went really well, and I heard from so many restaurants downtown that just thanked the city so much because they had their days, which is like none other. This year, I don't know why, but we seem to have so many more families. This was the biggest year. We had 2,400 applicants sign up, but we had 1,998 actually show up and pick up their packages, representing 41 different countries, and it was just phenomenal. And those from other countries stayed a whole week long. So it is a huge impact on Delaware, and it is a lot of work and it takes a lot, a lot of volunteers, and we had some awesomes this year. I talked to Bill a few times last week and this week about the roads that are being redone, especially around the schools, and I understand why now, why they're being done so late when school starts Wednesday. And just from the phone calls and the people that are stopping me on the streets, if we can get that word out, whether it be on social media some way to let people know that the grant money doesn't come in until July, that's why we can't start till August 1st. And it's just, it's very frustrating for a lot of people, especially the street I live around, there's two schools, and it should have been done. And I understand Congress is going to face the same thing. So if we can just put that word out, I think it would put everybody's mind at ease, so. And with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn. And we adjourned at 9:14.